Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Joint meeting of the -- excuse me. Joint meeting. Thank you, I appreciate it. Joint meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee of Town Council Thursday, January 30th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, Rice Conference Room. The meeting is being videotaped as well. And if you have not signed in, please make sure you do. Uh, we'll do a agenda item number one. We do have a quorum here. Uh, agenda item number one, considering except Plan and Development meeting minutes of January 16th, 2020, and you have first second. You? Any amendments to it? Any discussion? Go ahead, yours, yes, yours. Any amendments to this? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Page zero one. Agenda item number two, discuss the amendment to the CDVG FY 2019 contract with DHCD to increase the code enforcement service area to include the new target area of Crane Main. Entertain a motion to recommend that council approve this amendment. You have first and second. Second. All right, town manager.
Uh, thank you for the courtesy, Mr. Chairman, but tonight's agenda is really CDVG, so Peg will be leading the efforts on tonight's agenda items.
Thank you for having me. I want to just quickly highlight the map that I handed out this evening is a higher-quality map than the map you received in your packets. Councilor Steve, can you read it? Please. Does anyone else need one? You'll see at the bottom, the legend, you'll notice the blue is Crane to Main target area. That is the target area within which we'd like to increase our code enforcement for the fiscal year 19. This is a technical motion. In order for us to spend the CDVG funds, we need the town council to approve the amendment. Once you approve, we bring it to DHCD for approval. The fiscal year 19 funds have just been released, so it's excellent timing to be able to improve the services through the inspections department. Uh, I'd like Andy to speak. If you have any questions, you can drop them to him. If that's okay.
Gus?
Um, yeah, just to clarify, because I was always under the impression that when we were doing code enforcement, when we originally approved the job, um, that it could cover the entire town. Are you saying it can only be used in CDVG areas?
You've been given permission through DHCD to use the funds within and adjacent to the target areas for your health inspections position. That's 40% funded by the town, so you obviously can be using those funds throughout the town.
Okay. So why are you specifically trying to create this area as opposed to the other areas that are already target areas?
According to the CDVG grant, you're supposed to be tying your, uh, your money to the national objectives, and the national objections objectives can either be to increase the quality of low-to-moderate income residents or to address slum and blight target areas. So if you look at this, the aqua blue and the purple are both slum and blight target areas, and your low-to-moderate income were the, the red and the yellow.
Okay.
And your highest low-to-moderate income census block is this blue. So it seems to me intuitive that you would be addressing low-to-moderate income residents within the highest census block. So then, when we go to close out the grant, we are tying all of our work, our money, with goals, objectives, and data that we can then pull from the census data within that block.
Any other discussion? One question that I asked Peg before was, uh, was if there was any extra costs, which obviously there are none, and added personnel to this at all because of FY 19 CDVG funds, and there were none. And that's the only questions I really had for Peg, and she answered quickly, but I wanted to address that one with the rest of the subcommittee before we move forward. No others?
I noticed looking at the map, it talks about this being a, a section of track 57, 757300.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any particular reason why the other block groups of that track are not eligible?
You can see how, so one of the things we did over the summer is I was looking for project ideas was we created the map overlay, the, the census block groups and their percentages. And so if you look at the other 7573, 75731 has a different LMI percentage. Uh, LMI, 7573 block group, let's look around it, 7573. Yeah, that looks like the only other one. So that one was not as high an LMI.
Okay.
Um, we as a town overall have over 51% low-to-moderate income residents, which is the benchmark by which, um, CDVG requires that your projects meet.
Right.
And so, um, yes, we probably could have coupled it with other blocks, but, um, this to us was a, a huge increase to our already target areas, so we thought we'd start there.
Do you know what, do you know what percentage in that block group went?
No, and I'm, uh, sorry that it's not listed there. I'll, can I get back to you with it?
Sure.
Oh, we had to update this a few times. This may be a version that just by error we left it out.
It's one of the highest ones, right?
The 7573 block? No, this one, yeah, the one underneath it.
Oh, underneath.
And if I remember, oh, we were just looking at this for the West Street. It's, it's somewhere around 70%, but I'll get back to you.
What's the cutoff for CDVG?
51%. It can't be less than 51%.
Any other questions, discussion? Councilor Katie?
So looking at your map here, West Street is not even in the target area.
How, how, exactly. And when we get to the activities, we can talk about under which national objectives we're, we're meeting certain, um, projects or projects are meeting, yeah.
But Moore Street is within the target area.
Can I just correct that? So, oh, there is a portion of West Street that's in the Globe Village target area. And that's...
I'm asking about this map right here. It doesn't look like any of it is in the target area.
Yeah, so if you look at the purple, this line right here, that's West Street right there, so that all of that West Street is in a slum and blight target area. And then the reason I said it's not in a target area is because I thought we were still talking about the low-to-moderate income target areas. So we have two slum and blight target areas, so I apologize. You were asking about the difference.
I guess the map's not very good. I thought this was West Street.
Oh, no, so this is West Street right here. So this is part of the Globe Village. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor? Posed? Page zero. I'm sorry, five second. All right, number three. Agenda item number three, discuss the grant components for fiscal year 20, community block grant application for total grant award of $825,000, and entertain a motion to recommend that the council authorize the town managers apply for this grant. First and second. It's town manager.
Again, I'm going to refer to Peg. She knows this project, we're going to go through it step by step.
Okay.
You were given a handout of the project activities? Uh, so the activity number and letter are just by DHCD requirements. There are the different categories. You have 4D, your housing rehab, 6A, your program delivery, 6C, your public infrastructure for McCann Fields, 6B for public infrastructure for West Street, 6C for McCann Fields, and then nine for administration. Everything's been broken out in detail within the narratives. Your total budgets are broken out by proposed budget with the, under, for instance, the 4D, your sub-budgets. Your total, $825,000. The lion's share going to the West Street Public Facilities Infrastructure Project, that will be the, um, DPW oversight. Uh, code enforcement will be the inspections oversight. McCann Fields will be DPW oversight, and the administration is the admin assistant, part of the CDVG coordinator and the, and part of the economic development director. Would you like each of the departments to maybe speak specifically to the projects?
Well, let's see if any of the counselors or any subcommittee, anybody else has any questions before we move on for this.
Just for the public, since it's on cable again, could you outline the various public hearings that you've held and meetings that you've held?
Sure.
To get us to this point?
Sure.
So to say that you've vetted numerous times to allow input, to allow the councils that are here as well as the public. Thank you.
We met September 26th in a meeting. We met, uh, in October, October 24th for a public hearing. We met January 9th for a second public hearing. All, uh, links to those, uh, have been, or that were recorded at the end of your narrative. You can find any of them through the cable access channel. We tried diligently to move the timeline, timeline as far back as possible to allow the opportunity for everyone to ensure they could voice their concerns.
Could you tell me how many people from the public may have come to those meetings that were publicized numerous times?
Sure. The public meeting may have been the best well-attended. I think we had a handful. The, uh, this, the October 24th, I think we had one, two, three counselors in attendance and redevelopment authority member. And the public hearing last week was well-attended with quite a few town counselors, the Ortizes on behalf of the New England Hand Ballers Association, and some of the staff.
Through your, and through those public hearings, any concerns that were expressed have been addressed and enumerated or changed within your proposals, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that the public knows that we've given ample opportunity to have comment period on this, that it's been publicized, and that you've done, no doubt, which I knew you would, in your department, have done due diligence to make sure that we've addressed any concerns on this vital project.
Yes. I, I should note, the public hearings are required to be posted. Uh, we publish them two weeks prior to the meetings. Uh, the only feedback we received from the community, uh, we received nothing in writing. We did receive comments at the last public hearing on January 9th from the Ortizes about their interest in a handball court. The town manager was gracious enough to be able to address those directly during the meeting. Uh, they spent the, the last 15 minutes of that discussion specifically on how they could resolve, uh, how they could come to a resolution outside of CDVG funds.
Thank you. With that, I will support this because I think we've done our due diligence to make sure that we have feedback from all participants, counselors, town residents, and everything, so I fully support this project. Thank you.
I want to make note before anybody else discusses, first of all, this is besides your, your public hearings and your public meeting that you had that did not require, I believe you did that as, as your own, on your own accord, you and the, the rest of the team. Um, it's also not only on cable access, it's on a subscription to YouTube that the, the town has, and it's readily available. I also put on my Facebook pages as well.
Thank you.
So along with this video, once it's all done, will be also on there as well. Any other discussion on this?
Just to clarify, the, the DPW projects, and obviously this is just stuff that's been covered by CDVG funds, how much, how much of this is going to be covered by DPW funds? Dr. Knight, you're on the right.
Those are the...
I do have it.
Okay, so I have the spreadsheets. If you'd like me to hand them out, it's up to you, or?
Sure, you can hand them out.
So this is specific to the West Street project?
Right. Did you get two? Okay, so what she's handing out is a spreadsheet that, um, we have developed, kind of detailing the project, entire project cost. I will say entire without the sewer because it doesn't have a sewer cost in here, because there's also a sewer component, but for paving in non-target waterline and non-target and target areas. So we're sitting at about 1.2 million overall, including engineering oversight and administration. It does not include design fees, which will be covered with Chapter 90 sewer and water capital items in the capital budget coming before you soon. So it's, um, much similar to the way we've done Main Street. We're leveraging our money to try to do the best we can with multiple some fund, uh, funding sources. So we've known for a while that we've had some water and sewer issues up there. Um, some projects for water have already been done. It's part of the reason the street's in the condition up there that it is. We know there's sewer main issues. So all of those issues need to be incorporated before it's done. In addition, we've known for a long time that, um, there are sidewalks on one side of West Street, but not on both sides of West Street, so we want to institute putting sidewalks, especially on the school side, thinking that we, we know people use that side, we want that to have sidewalks. So this is kind of a breakdown. Granted, these are high-level budgetary numbers. These are not, these are based on GIS mapping, things that we see in the field. A detailed design has not been completed. These are high-level numbers, so this is how we get to our budgets. Engineer will do a detailed design and go from there. The sewer main project with engineering is probably close to a half million is what I have in the budget right now. It's a replacement of the sewer main. It's not just a lining, it's collapsed. Um, it also needs to be upsized. Um, when you start doing that, it gets pretty expensive pretty quick. So that is on the upper portion of West Street, I'll call it, closer to South Street to where, into the vicinity of the school, say, West is School Street area. The water line that we're looking to replace is from School Street down to Main Street. Okay? To give you an idea from that standpoint, obviously, the whole road's going to get repaved. Sidewalks that, where there aren't sidewalks are going to be installed. Where there are sidewalks that need repair, they'll be repaired. Where there are sidewalks that are good, we're going to try to preserve them. So you got a combination of what's going on there. The whole road will be reclaimed and repainted. Does that give you a good summary of the project?
Um, we asked, uh, back in the summer if she had any potential projects that were already on her radar screen, uh, say, for instance, through her pavement plan or on her capital plan, et cetera, that fall within our target areas. And so because this is a slum and blight area, this was surveyed back in 2016, uh, the conditions showed that it was in poor condition.
Sorry.
And it, Peg and I were talking today, and she goes, this is on, I said, yes, I can tell you that it's one of the poorest graded roads in town. I can't tell you what the PCI is, I didn't look it up, but I think we all have been up West Street, we know how bad it is.
Um, you, if I follow up on that, um, do you, you know what kind of an impact doing the work will have on the school? Like, in terms of like, have you talked to the schools about busing and that kind of stuff?
No.
No?
We, we can make efforts to do it. Some of the work, maybe not start the major, the paving, we're going to try to make an effort to do it in the summer. That all talks, that, that's when you start getting in engineering and bidding. We are six to nine months out from having those conversations. Um, we will try to minimize the impacts of the school, but it is construction, so...
Just to throw in there, it's also in there, you, you have a police details budget forward in there, so I'm assuming the conversation will be had prior to...
Oh, manage, traffic management and everything is part of the design when you do the engineering design.
For you, when do you anticipate this project commencing?
Starting?
Yeah.
Summer '21.
Summer '20? Summer '20?
Construction, summer '21.
Yeah, no, I just want a timeline that, so we have Main...
It depends on, so you realize...
Main Street is going...
This summer.
This summer. So this would be the fall and summer contingent on approvals and all that.
Contingent on the money, I mean, at least a lot of times, CDVG money doesn't get released until September.
No, I get it, I just, just...
So you've got to realize, we can't, that's not totally true. Depending on when we get the design done and get it out and bid, because some of this is being funded through our own funding sources, if we feel very confident, it will be a determination from council whether they want to move forward and bid it before that money is released. You've got to remember, that means you're banking on a funding source that you don't have yet.
Got you.
It's not that it's impossible, it means that you will be banking that you're going to, they're going to release the money.
So this is a follow-up, though. Anticipating that this will be done because some town money is being used for sewer water?
Correct.
You could stop that project at that time, correct?
We could potentially, right, but you're going to go out to bid, you're going to award one contract with multiple funding sources, so...
Got you. Yeah, no, okay. So, so Main Street, summer of '20, West Street anticipation, summer of '21. Okay, thank you.
South Street, somewhere in that same, in between, all that whole time.
Oh, one quick question, follow-up on that, is that, so under, if, for some reason the CDVG money is delayed, can, can CDVG funds be used to, um, to like reimburse town funds that have already been spent on a project?
They can be retroactively charged, uh, but I don't know under what terms because I'm new to this. We could look into those details?
I can answer that. Um, we're not supposed to incur any expenses until we sign the contract for the grant. So, um, you know, and that doesn't happen until sometimes November-ish, October, November of the year in which we apply, so...
So you're, so you're hoping inside the grant for this, for this year?
Right. It's just the funds supplement don't get released right then.
Sometimes they don't get raised until February.
Yeah, so here we are, right, just getting the, yeah, funds for 19.
Councilor Dan?
Um, I'm looking at your police details, and you say it's itemized as two details in 12 weeks, yet it's 24 weeks total. Does that, is it a, so I'm confused, is that a three-month project or a six-month project?
I think it's supposed to be two-day tells for 12 weeks, 24 people, unit cost.
So some of them want it?
12 weeks per, 12 peo-, 12 weeks per detail.
12 people weeks?
Yeah.
So it's a three-month project?
Yeah.
That whole thing?
Oh, yeah.
Be done in three months? Everything, the lines?
Well, I mean, it, it's three working months. It might take six months to do it, but it's working. Except some things are going to take delays and things that you're not going to get it. You're not going to work six months, three months straight. You never do.
Okay. Well, it's hoping.
It doesn't happen.
Any other questions?
And again, I just want to say, this is preliminary, high-level...
Right.
Don't, yeah, don't hold us to, this is to get...
That's my take. Go ahead.
The chairman said that you had some hearings on this, and you said that you had some residents' feedbacks that you addressed. Could you tell me what they were?
Sure, I think I mentioned the only, the only, yeah, the Ortizes were the only comments that we received. That was it, in the, in the actual hearings.
So if somebody came to one of your hearings, which I used to when I was a citizen, I would come to a hearing, and I would listen to it, and I had some comments about it, but it was like it was a done deal. There was nothing I could do about it. I could just say, I kind of object to this, but you'd say, well, that's too bad, it's a done deal, correct? Am I correct?
So I don't know how the office conducted itself in the past?
No, I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying that that's how it works.
Uh, DHCD, um, overseen by HUD, is adamant about public participation and showing that you have done a good job of making sure that you're getting public input, public participation at every stage of creating the application. And we did a better job this year than we have in previous years.
And now the West Street, that's going to be, that's not just going to be graded, that's going to be completely dug up, is that what you're suggesting, so?
Well, when you do water and sewer lines, you have to complete, in this case, we have to complete it, dig it up, that...
Not the whole thing, just...
Well, but you, the condition, the overall condition of the road is so impacted already that there is, you can't just mill and overlay it. It is not competent enough. So the best method is to what is called reclaim, and you're mixing it all back in, so now you have a good sub-base. It'll take some grading and some compaction, but because there's so many utility cuts in that road and so many compromised locations in that road, meaning that it's sunk and it's not even, you can't mill and overlay it. It's not, even if you did an excellent job on your utility trench now, the old ones are, it's a poor condition, it's, it's, it's past the point of no return. It has to be started again.
So who's going to oversee this project?
Well, the, the oversight will be done, there's oversee engineers, we will have an oversee consultant, but that goes out to bid.
Who from the town is going to do it?
It will be a joint project between DPW and CDVG, because it's both of our projects.
Okay, so somebody will be on site once in a while, check on the...
Oh, yeah. We're on site on all the projects, whether they're ours or not.
Well, I don't know, Central Street kind of like...
Sir, I went to Central Street and closed that job down just because the contractor didn't...
I'm not blaming anybody on this thing.
No, you are. So, hold on a minute. Thing is, there were people where accidents do happen, mistakes do happen, but the point is, they won't know what happens until it's already too late. So let's move on.
I can't afford to do full-time oversight on the job. I obviously have way too many projects and way too many things going on in this town that neither would my staff. I would love to have staff that was dedicated to go out and visit every project every day. I don't think we can afford that, so...
Well, let me, let me back up on that. We did have somebody overseeing it that was hired to oversee it, but it seems to me that it wasn't out of overseeing it really well, because we did have a lot of problems with it. We had a year and a half delay on it, we had a lot of mistakes on the project, so... I just want to make sure somebody's overseeing it from the town, and overseeing the people who are supposed, are getting paid a lot of money to oversee the project, that's all. And I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three of your questions. From my own knowledge, I, I like the work that's going to be done at the fields, and that's nice to see. Uh, can you, the CDVG funds in light of the recent issues of the industry, could you use for video surveillance?
Sorry, we had this conversation today.
Okay.
Kind of ironic. Um, I, we, I will be honest, neither Peg or I are experts in video surveillance, and my suggestion to Peg was to call the police department and try and get some recommendations from them, because I would say, yes, we have a, um, a dugout there, there's a place that we could probably put a DVR with some recording devices. Somebody still has to go and check that, it wouldn't be live, like, feedback. Um, that's much more expensive. Am I, I'm sure, right? Like, I have a DVR, okay. I don't know, I'm looking, I'm looking for some...
You can do wireless, but we're going to do the improvements, which I like, I think it's fantastic, but concern is the possibility of the image as well. Thank you.
Just in addition to that, when we had the graffiti at the basketball court, the police chief and Jose were looking into it, seeing may want to touch base with them, because they had already started to look at it.
They have their own way of doing, installing cameras and doing monitoring already.
Okay.
So it's possible, because we've had impacts up there, that they might want to do some additional monitoring, but I do know that they have their own cameras that they can move around from place to place. Um, I don't know what they are.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we have a discussion with them because of the recent activity that we've had there, if they probably could have already done it, and that wouldn't even happen.
That was your statement.
Um, to go back to West Street, I was curious, are, do you foresee any particular, other particular potential issues in that project? And if you're going to be expanding the, um, the sewer mains, do you expect it to be less?
I don't, I suspect that the new sewer main is going to go right back in the existing trench. Um, it's just the size of the pipe will be bigger, which will require that the manholes be upgraded and things of that nature.
But the trench isn't even one.
But I don't, I know, I'm trying to remember when we did water up there, to tell you the truth, there's definitely ledge. Whether it's, whether, whether it's blasting or a lot of hammering, I wouldn't be surprised that we're going to have to hammer out some of the ledge. I believe we did have to when we put the water line in, but I think we were able to hammer it, not blast it. So, um, I think it would probably require hammering, which we're all familiar with now. But in, in the lower section of West Street, I would suspect, because I think that's actually raised up a lot, given the grade that goes down towards the river there. And again, we'll probably be going close to the same trench if we have to hammer it, we'll be hammering. It's two, yeah, that will be something they'll have to consider when they, they might not even be able to tell though, until they start digging it up. We'll have a rock, um, item.
Councilor Steve, all good? Councilor Jordan?
This is directed to you, Ms. Karen. I know you've been very active in trying to get, uh, some information on complete streets, and this was the project that you had talked about, possibility of that. Is that a possibility to have additional funds to this? Is that working on that? Would we be able to work on that in the timely, to do any additional work or contribute to that cost?
Because this would be a year from this summer. I would say...
Is it a possibility?
It's a possibility. I don't, I... It's a possibility, I don't, I am not.
Right.
The, I know, I know Eric's gonna go and do the training, and that's, okay, so I know then the next step is a policy, um, I know of a couple engineers that are volunteered to give us draft policies so that we can see them, and then you have to do your program, and then the awards come out, so, a timing thing, once you get the program.
It may be a possibility.
It may be a possibility for sidewalks, you know, some of it.
Bike lane or.
Yeah, it could be some of that, got.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna try to answer the counselor's, uh, questions too as well, I've talked to Eric a little bit about it, and, uh, I know Rosemary a little bit, um, I know Eric went and got his training, so that's great, um, I think he's talking about several meeting, so CMRPC or BHB to kinda go over the whole process with us a little bit, cause those are the experts for us, and then bring hopefully the state in, take a look at that as well, uh, so they can prioritize the streets, they're kinda reiterating what, uh, the DPW director is, is mentioning, and then hopefully, maybe, West Street, it helps with ADA compliance, gives us more funding, uh, bike lanes, all that.
Could do bike lane on there, could do sidewalks on there, all those costs would be eligible.
That, that would be great to be able to do that, especially since the street cuts off, you know, you got Main and then it goes to South Street, so, that, that shuts it down, maybe, CPG money, there's no real wood in here, so, would pay for, you know, maybe, use for something else later on, or Chapter ninety money, or our own funds.
Okay, thank you, as long as we're, I knew you were working very hard on that, as long as we keep that in the queue and, uh, forget about it and leave it set at that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steve.
Okay, two more questions, actually, if you want to follow up on that, you can answer this, Ms. Chair, um, you mentioned BHB working with them for complete streets, I don't recall ever seeing a contract come to the council to do, to hire BHB to do that.
So, not hire it?
They're just, they, they, I actually had a meeting with BHB today, and he asked me again, BHB is one of this, so, to do complete streets, you have to be from a consultant, you have to be complete street qualified, and you have to be DOT approved, cause it's a DOT program. So they are, they've done a lot of complete street programs, and one of the principals who works with us here a lot, who helped us on our, all our downtown projects, has volunteered his time to come in and tell you his experiences and his knowledge of what is done. Then you would be able to put out, um, or go out and find a consultant, um, to there, knowing, having background. He's volunteered to come do it, not being paid for it.
Okay, cool, volunteer, volunteer helps always good.
So, nothing at this point, um, Counselor Steve is, is, there's no contract, there's no nothing, it's all just the process with the, the taking and.
Okay, great.
Cause you do have to select a consultant and petition through them to do the application, you can't do it yourself.
Okay, that's a, thank you, um, and the other question is regarding the code enforcement officer, um, I, I know we've been doing this for a couple of years now, do you have any data on how effective this job has been?
I could, um, call the data that I get from the department quarterly, uh, and compile it for your reference, I could get it to you by. Or, the inspections director might have better notes.
Morning, good afternoon.
Evening.
What evening? In your world. I can speak strongly on the first year of the program, the second year of the program, we lost our inspector, and we had a four-month hiatus, so, the records are a little bit miffed up, and we're trying to catch up on that right now, but, um, the first year of the program, we sent out one hundred and twenty-five requests for inspections on multi-family, street families and above, um, we had some consternation at the beginning of this, how effective this program would be. Obviously, this program was put into place to curtail blight and, and unsafe conditions before it occurs, so, we, um, sent out a hundred and twenty-five notices to landlords to respond and get an inspection, um, of that hundred and twenty-five, we currently have fifteen with no response. So we had a really good, uh, comeback on the number who responded, we get a hundred and ten inspections, only eighteen of the properties passed on the first inspection. So, we issued orders to correct, following orders to correct, we, um, ended up with, we currently have, um, I didn't write that information down, but I believe we are around eighty-three percent, I mean eighty-three properties out of the hundred and ten we wrote have compliance letters on them now, so we issued orders, and they complied and brought the businesses up to stuff. The common violations we found, found a lot of bad handrails, which is a definite trip and fall hazard for the tenants, we found a lot of, the biggest thing we find is no carbon monoxide detectors, seconded by just smoke detectors, so, literally, these were accidents waiting to happen, and we caught them before they did. So, um, we put ninety-two under orders, and we currently have like eight that aren't, that haven't complied with us yet. Our new inspector is on now, you appointed him two weeks ago, um, he's trying to catch up, get everything in line, and he'll be issuing the next series of requests for inspections, he's gonna be concentrating on the new area, the blue area, the Pine Street and, uh, Pine Street, Cross Street, Union Street area, so we're hoping to get similar success in those areas, um, after he sends out those letters, he'll try to catch up on the four-month hiatus that we just had, and try to straighten out what we've lost and get information.
And what do you do if a landlord continues to not comply?
We have, what we do is if they don't sign up for an inspection, we issue tickets on them, unfortunately, by losing the inspector, it's gonna be hard to follow up on the tickets, we can do the initial ticket, um, as you know, Jack, we can, we can take it to court for the magistrate hearing, but without the actual inspection, inspector there, we can't bring it to the criminal, so, what we'll probably do is wash those tickets, um, we'll start issuing new tickets, and our new inspector will go to court, I'll, I'll bring him a few times so he can know the system, um, and then, but, the ones that don't pass, we're gonna bring it to housing court, we're gonna get the judge to order him to do it.
Okay, and how long does that take to get?
Um, well, we can bring it, I can do an ex parte order tomorrow, if, if it's a serious enough condition, or, what we do is we issue an order, give them however time our inspector feels is appropriate to correct the conditions, we'll issue a second order with a threat to bring them to court. Um, if they fail to meet that deadline, we'll issue the third, which will be a summons to appear.
Just one comment, Ms. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, one of the things we have is we have some committee that looks at blight issues and housing issues, and we had scheduled and, and detailed which properties were problems, and we tried to line up a priority order, and part of that is taking down the building, but one of the nice things that happened is myself, Andy, I think Will was the other person with us, went out to take a look at properties, you know, cause we constantly update the list and look at things happening. Doing two things that were really good, is that the blight was reduced by a lot of the efforts that are going on here, but also because the economy's been pretty good, we're seeing a lot of people in the south, which are actually rehabilitating houses, and putting them back on the market because the rents are going up and stuff, so we are finding it much more difficult to find the kind of blighted properties than what we used to, so it was an overall look to the town, we've seen significant improvement among properties. And frankly, we were all kinda pleased that we weren't fighting as much as we had in the past, so I would say you, and I think anyone could tell us that you're around town, you're seeing a lot of houses being rebuilt with foundation, and there's a lot of activity in part of it because of what we're doing, but also a big part because the economy's going well, we're just making housing more valuable, and so, I'm encouraged to see the town getting nicer and nicer for a variety of reasons.
Counselor, go ahead.
We have two, Andy, um, so, the inspector that left, is that the last inspector that we just had, or one before that?
Bill Cantel was the first inspector, he started the program, very impressive program, uh, he's, he's, he's got it all lined out, we'll catch up real quick.
Right.
But he was the only inspector we had so far, Kevin replaced him, he left us in October, I believe.
Okay, so, but, so, did the one that left, did he assume a full-time job somewhere, or did?
To my knowledge, he's back contracting again.
Okay, but he actually, so.
He actually pulled a permit today.
Okay, so, but, but my question would be, um, not to, or, comment would be, not to give up on those properties and contact him to say, you know, would you come back and testify in the town, or put some money to, aside, to pay for his time? I mean, that's what we do with police officers that leave employment, or leave to another agency, that, uh, the agreement is, if they have to go into court to testify for something, they're paid out of that town that they work for to reimburse, uh, for whatever time that they lost, so I wouldn't give up on anything that we may wanna pursue in court, just say it's a done, a done deal, that would reach out and say, would you be willing to do this, so that we continue that fight?
I'll give him a call, but again, he's back into, he's, he's working for himself again, so. Um, I'll try.
No, it's just, it's just, you know.
I'll try.
If, if it's a lot of them, then maybe not, but, sometimes you get hands on one day, or.
Well, we can do, we can do the bulk of them before the magistrate, and he's very successful to get some pay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll bring in the magistrate ones, and if they go to criminal.
See what happens.
We'll either dismiss them, if I can't get Bill back, or.
Or whatever, I may, I may get on a case by case basis of how severe it might be too, if it's just a simple, hey, you know, we
Yep.
live the fight another day.
I gotta tell you honestly, I'd forgive the tickets if we can just get the inspections, you know, my goal is to get these properties safe.
No, absolutely, I think that's everybody's goal, thank you.
So, just, just to comment, when, when Bill left, I had a long kind of exit interview with Bill, and, uh, he had, at that time, he had two part-time jobs that were gonna pay significantly more than what he had, so that was one of the reasons he was leaving, but Bill, one of the good things about Bill, he was very well organized, and he left really good documentation, he was working with Jen, and he really documented the houses that he did and stuff, and he even said to me, he, he left in a very good way, so he said to me, if we, if we need help to coordinate with him, he'd be willing to talk to us and do whatever, so I think, yeah, opportunity is there for your suggestion, and we can talk to Bill about that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Any other questions, discussion, so, and a couple, go ahead, Counselor.
Go ahead, I'll let you go.
Thank you, alright, uh, the funds that we put aside, the hundred thousand dollars that we put aside as the town council this year, and then possibly next year, um, or this coming fiscal year, that'd be two hundred thousand dollars, have we even used any of that money at all, that hundred thousand dollars? We use that for, um, the twenty twenty-one or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, West Street, um.
So, we did use some of that money for, um, the Mill Street inspection work that we're doing on the bridge. That's where we voted that money out of, for when we were gonna, for what's being coordinated there, um, there, other than that, nothing has been touched to date, um. So, yes, the, if, if that's where we would wanna use the funding, I would strongly reserve that maybe we coupled the two, the hundred thousand, and hopefully the hundred thousand we got there, and try to work on some of the other projects that we've delayed, and considering we've already set aside money for, in Chapter ninety, for West Street, you know, like, West Street's already got like its packet of money. And, unless for some reason when we go out to bid, the numbers come up crazy, more, I don't suspect that, I actually suspect that we were probably higher than ninety to be, cause that's how conservative we are, but, I don't, I would rather say, okay, we have enough pot of money, let's pick a few streets, even though it's hard to find them right now, to mill and overlay, and do a bigger impact with that hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand dollars in that case.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Can I clarify that question? Just to your point, were you saying this money that we have in this fiscal year, use it in FY twenty-one?
No.
Or just the line item itself?
Just the line item itself, really, because we're gonna actually hopefully grow that line item, correct?
Well, and that is not, that.
I mean, I just, I didn't wanna clarify that, you weren't talking about, like, keeping that money to the side because it's, it's regular operating budget.
No, I just wanna make sure we're able.
No, it's not regular operating money, it's been put in a special fund.
The extra hundred grand?
The hundred thousand is probably operating budget into the regular budget.
I don't believe so, not the way Karen.
Did we put that into an article?
I think she put it into an article.
I thought we did, but I'd have to look at it again, but I think they.
So it's like a project.
It's like a fund thing, I think that's what happened during budget time, but I'll have to check it.
Instead of an operating budget, it was taken out of, out of, out of direct operating money and put in its own article, I'm not, what.
It's very remembering too.
We would have to talk to Karen about it, that's how we discussed it, cause I would, if that's the case, I need to figure out what I'm gonna do for ninety-five thousand dollars.
No, cause I, I mean, that's an important distinction, cause I thought we built it into the regular DPW budget as a road account.
No, it's not my budget, it's not in my direct budget, I can tell you that, just cause I see the budget numbers, it does, has its own special project number.
But it's an appropriation for a regular fiscal year though, so that's, I, if you could just check that.
We will check it soon as it's back next week.
And make sure that you don't have to expend it.
Yeah, no, if I will.
You know what I mean, because.
Double check that with her, cause you're right, I don't wanna lose the money.
Oh, no, right, because my, my understanding when we went through the budget process was to say, okay, we had a hundred thousand this year, and then next year.
We wanted to.
It wasn't that we were rolling over, it was you had a hundred thousand dollars to spend this year additional, and then next year, try to grow that line item to two hundred thousand, based out of the tax rate money, right?
So that's what I'm thinking.
So, so that, that, that money should be used in that fiscal year.
I believe that is true, but it was put in a special article, specially funded, so that basically, we could carry it over, so that we wouldn't run into the fact where we're running around just looking for a tab to spend the money, that we weren't spending the money just to spend the money, which.
Just in turn that we could roll it over from every year for the project.
I think that's a good idea too.
No, I, I, I agree.
You like that idea, it's just whether we did it that way or not.
Whether we did it that way or not.
Blip.
So, just, just a comment, that, that's exactly the way I remember it too, we purposely put it into an article to be able to roll it over, so we could use it every year, that was the intention when we did it, and I think we, you're right, it comes out of the regular operating budget, it's set up there, and you can put money from the operating budget into articles which can be used every year, so that's not uncommon, we do that in other things.
Right.
That, that is the way I recall it too, we'll double check, but I'm almost a hundred percent sure that's the way we did it.
Counselor, my kid, you have something?
No, I just wanna make sure there are residents here that they get allowed, that they're allowed to talk.
Exactly.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mark.
I may be out of order, but, I believe the grant had money for a building inspector. Right, my question is, doesn't the town have this question, why, and building inspector? Why made more?
I mean, I can give you an answer, or we're gonna answer.
Just for a grant funded?
Go ahead.
I, I, I guess in a strip, but I think Andy probably is the best person to answer, so a lot of us can answer each question for you. So we have a regular building inspector who does inspect buildings in town, but, in the past, we only had a part-time building inspector. You're required to inspect, I think, all houses within a five-year period, if I'm correct, is that right?
Housing units.
For, right, for code, we did not do that, cause we only had a part-time building inspector, so, the current building inspector is doing certain types of units, and then, what's happening is this person under the CDB great G grant is focused on multi-family residential type housing, and we're trying to catch up, inspect all those houses, particularly, one of the big concerns we had, is, is, as you heard before, blight, what I'm gonna say, not all, declare, some slummers who are not taking care of their properties, we wanted to make sure we put pressure on them to maintain their properties and correct their properties, so this is a big focus of the town, to be able to improve all these multi-families in town, and make sure they're inspected properly, things like, as Andy talked about, things like fire, the fire alarms are in there, the carbon monoxide things, that the railings are safe, that, you know, people aren't falling off the stairs, all that kinda stuff, so, is a lot of it is really making sure that they're meeting the safety requirements of the building code, not. If it's okay, yeah, go ahead.
I can expand on it a little bit, um, Ron speaks about a part-time building inspector, he was only on this part-time for just over a year, um, Nick originally ran both border health and building departments as a single show, um, while he was doing that, he prioritized what he could get done, realizing he couldn't get the whole job done, um, one of the things he wasn't doing was the multi-families, a lot of the, um, assembly places were done every couple years, um, he, he did what he could with the resources he had, the grant gave us the opportunity, a lot of towns don't do these multi-families. The code requires they get done, but a lot of towns forego them because they don't have the resources to do them, we took the opportunity to, for this grant, to do these multi-families, protect the public in their homes, um, and ultimately, we're charging the landlords twenty-five dollars per unit to do it, so, we found that, um, Bill was making twenty-three thousand dollars a year, he made nineteen thousand back into the general fund, so it was almost a wash in the, uh, in the cost of the town, we, we got it in from a grant, and we moved it into the, um, general fund, but, it was a process that could not be done because of lack of resources prior to it, this gave us the resources to get the total job done.
Can I just elaborate a little bit, so, and, and, um, it was, I, one of the keys here, so it's proactive, um, because the building code tells communities that they're supposed to go out and inspect for these safety issues, um, housing units above two or three units, every five years, every unit that is in a building, that that, that is two or large, or larger than two, and so that's proactive, in addition to reacting to all the regular, everyday work that comes into the building inspector's office, so, it's one of those things that slides. I'm looking for that to slide in other communities, because it, it's a proactive thing, people aren't coming at you.
Would, would the backlog have been terminated if the building inspector had assisted?
If the building.
This position, this position is a local inspector position, it actually falls under the building inspector, it is essentially his assistant, um, we're paying for it through the CDBG grant because we're respectful of the town's budget, um, would I love to have a town-funded local inspector, yeah, I would, um, the backlog doesn't go away, it's a five-year program, we do, there's six hundred and twenty-five units in town, we do a hundred and twenty-five of them a year, so, at the end of five years, we'll have done them all and start over again, so there's never, the backlog is never gone, and we can keep up with the conditions and make sure that they don't turn into blight conditions. So there's never, the backlog is never gone, and we can keep up with the conditions and make sure that they don't turn into blight conditions.
Mark, you got any deals?
I'm sorry, I, I thought like, I didn't agree to back, but it doesn't look like I can do so. If we will be, I would like a copy of what a grant comes about.
Okay, we'll get you a copy of that.
I'll probably email, ask a question back.
Do you want to receive that?
I, I've got his email address, I can always send it to you.
We, we've exchanged emails before. Yes, we, we've exchanged emails, I can make sure I get him some of the details of the grant if you'd like.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Did you get the handout?
Yeah, we'll.
We can give you this handout, because it was.
My hands are over.
He's got to see it, I'll try and get it.
Okay.
Mark, you good, everything, any other questions? No more questions, good? Anybody else have anything?
I'll do it by the.
You got it. Um, the other couple of questions I had was, um, the McMahonfield, when you talked about, uh, on six C public facilities, infrastructure, but manfield improvements. Uh, you wrote in here about, uh, previous years' work, that, where it says that things like the third, third or fourth line down, manfields will provide a town-wide benefit to the town, or, so I'm sorry, thanks to previous year CBG investments. What, what previous years were there?
So in two thousand and fifteen, you had a design done by Warner Larson Incorporated, and that was the design that came in at, I think, one point three million, that the town was unable to pursue. You had three options within it, one, two, and two A. You choose two A because, I think you chose two A, because it was an à la carte, you could do a couple projects, and, and then you, you didn't have to do it all in one fell swoop. So that was a large investment for the town. You also did through the CDBG, um, towards the softball fields, you have the new, um, uh, you have the parking lot that was paved, you have the guard rail, the benches, those were all CDBG funded.
And the last one was, um, the last page where it says proposed budget ninety-five thousand dollars, that's for the three positions. Do you have a breakdown of?
I do, and I.
What they are?
Yes, and I don't think, um, Rosemary pointed out, I probably could have given you a better format on that, so I just, I'll pass this around. So the box shows, um, what the ninety-five thousand is. By CDBG guidelines, you can spend fifteen percent on administration, you can spend fifteen percent on program delivery. And so my position this year is gonna be a hybrid of the two, program delivery and administration. So that's why only forty percent of my position comes out of the administration. And then, uh, a third of the economic development directors comes out of the CDBG, the other comes out of your general funds, hundred percent of the admin assistant, which is now part-time. So we are allowed to spend up to twenty-seven percent on what's called administration and program delivery. We are only spending eighteen percent of the CDBG funds towards, uh, administration and program delivery.
Counselor Stevens?
I'd just clarify, what's the distinction between administration and program delivery?
Uh, program delivery would be, for instance, specific to a project. So I, you know, I'm obviously, I'm working on data for Andy and for DPW, and submitting those to DHCD related to those specific projects, that's program delivery. Administration is the, you know, I'm doing payroll, or I'm overseeing the administrative skills. Exactly, yes.
Am I mistaken, or are some of these expenses required by the grant, by the parameters of the grant?
So they would not fund you if they didn't think you had the capacity. So you, right, part of the reason why towns struggle to be able to get grants, uh, is because they don't have the ability to administer the grants. And so they're, they, they have to make sure that you have the positions in place to be able to properly manage their funds.
How, how do they, how, how do they, how do, I mean, how do they audit their funds? How are you?
Sure, sure. So you've seen through the bi-weekly reports for the town councillors, that you were audited in fiscal year seventeen recently. Uh, so what they're looking at is, um, financial, we have a financial rep and we have a program rep. They're making sure from the program side that you're meeting all the national objectives that you had initially applied for. From the financial side, they're making sure that all of your drawdowns are matching your expenses. Um, and there's a constant checks and balances. I commend the DHCD, I, I actually, I like the CDBG programs, checks and balances. I think they do a good job throughout. And, um, the, the drawdowns, so that financial piece is, is constantly being monitored. How else is it? When it comes to hiring, so management positions are vetted, they have to be vetted through DHCD before, um, we can, we can hire. So they're to that level of scrutiny.
Do they vet, do they vet positions, like, if somebody wants, if somebody, would they vet somebody who's already in position?
Uh, I don't know.
Just, you know, Counselor Stevens, now we get the regular town audit, and they give like a management letter, and they say, same thing as with the ECD, that's when they audit, and they have a management letter, if they find errors in what you're doing, and then we have to respond, just like we do the regular audit for those management issues. So it's, it's really, you know, they really make sure that you're doing everything correctly, and that has, I'll say this and clarify it, but, but they've gotten stricter in the last year, and they've come in and been a lot stricter this year, because they think there's been a change in leadership, as ever was, they cause them to be stricter.
There's a combination of factors. HUD came in and audited DHCD, DHCD is now, um, more closely scrutinizing. And yes, there's been, there's been just a changeover in institutional knowledge.
The fence, the fence came harder on the state, so the state came harder on local, that's what happened.
Yeah. Any, any other discussions? All right, all those in favor? Post? Your business? Motion adjourned?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.